Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the March 20th City Council meeting. And as a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. And Councilmember De Michele is attending tonight's meeting remotely. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I welcome you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next area on our agenda this evening is Audience Comments. Members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who have signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. And if you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you are joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak? For general audience comments or indicated desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. For those making comments, please direct your comments to the whole council and not individuals. And while this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, please unmute your microphone or step up to the lectern. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please speak clearly and pause frequently and limit comments to five minutes. If you're attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if you are able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes these comments seriously. We thank you for taking the time to address us. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who has signed up?
Yes, we have one person in the room and two virtual attendees who'd like to make comments. The first is in the room, Lori Burrell.
Come on up there, and you will have to push the button on to get a red light. You should be good to go.
Okay. Can you hear me okay? Okay, good evening. My name is Lori Burrell. And first of all, good evening, Mayor Polly, councilpeople, Wally, Trish, and all you guys in the room. My name is Lori Burrell. I am the president of Issaquah Community Services. We are one of the organizations that will benefit from the decision that is made tonight. We have served the Issaquah and the surrounding areas and as a nonprofit for the last 50 years. So we've been around a long time. Our mission is to provide rent and utility assistance to local families when they encounter a financial bump in the road. That could be a single parent at work getting a call from the school saying, sorry, you need to come pick up your children because they're sick. So they miss out on all that work time. We also have several adult residents that are not back to full-time work yet. Their 40-hour work week is something like 26, so they're just not full-time yet. Our all-volunteer organization will continue to work very hard, making sure that the neediest living in Issaquah will receive these funds. ICS fully supports the recommendation from the ICS City Administration to help our Issaquah residents recover from the pandemic issues as well as help with the increases due to cost of living. Thank you, councilmembers, mayor, for your consideration of the proposal. We are so grateful for your ongoing support for all these years. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. City Clerk, who's next?
Dia Executive Director is the next speaker. Let me make you a panelist now. You have the floor.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
So I just wanted to say hello for this evening, and I wanted to update both the City Council and the city on some of Dia's programming for the second quarter this year. So we have our Farm Fresh Market on Saturdays that starts this Saturday, goes from 9:00 until 2:00 p.m. And we've expanded it with live music and specialty food stalls and artisan booths, and that runs March 5th through April 29th. The Spring Fair, we're calling the last one of these April 29th, which will have country music as well as a downtown Issaquah discovery walk. Keep Issaquah Beautiful Day is Earth Day, which is April 22nd. This is a Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00. And people can meet at the Shell for that, or they can lead a neighborhood cleanup in their own neighborhood. We've also got Open Mic Night. Issaquah Open Mic Night is every Wednesday from 6:00 to 8:30 at the Train Depot. So that happens each month. Our first Wine and Art Work is Friday, May 5th, from 6:00 to 9:00. And finally, Fenders on Front Street is coming back. It's always on Father's Day, and that is June 18th, which is a Sunday, from 8:00 to 3:00. And finally, I'd just like to thank the city and the LTAC Committee for providing funds to Dia this year for Fenders on Front Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. City Clerk?
Next is Connie Marsh. Connie, I'm making you a panelist now.
I heard I'm making you, but I hope you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Perfect. So I'm Connie Marsh. I live up on Squawk Mountain. And I have a generalized topic today of what you know, but we out here in the world can't see or find. The major projects list, the active projects list, the links to the meetings that are held make it almost impossible to find the information to know what's happening in the city. It's super hard for the public to understand. And actually, it's gotten worse. The active projects list is very difficult. The major projects list on the front page of the website often lags and is in a format that's incredibly difficult to negotiate, and I think difficult for people to use. So at the last Subcommittee meeting on Title 18, council, those people were willing to sort of push this difficulty off into the future. And I'm unwilling to just let that stand. I have, for the last three weeks, tried to excavate what should be public information out of the website, and it's just too difficult for me. And that means a normal human who is not absolutely crazy is going to have a really, really, really hard time. And I don't think that is the point of our town. I think we're supposed to be trying to be transparent. And I'm here to tell you that it's not happening. I was just trying to figure out your topic of the Newport Way landslide. Is that going to impact private property? Is that going to impact land that you don't already own? I don't know. I was unable to ascertain that in any way, shape, or form. So here's my challenge. Pretend you are not on City Council. And on some of these topics, try going into what is only available to the community and see how far you get. And if you can find everything, then ignore me because I'm just not getting it, right? But if you find yourself in the same place as a normal community member who doesn't get the inside scoop, which is sort of left out, then I would ask you to take action and require something immediately to at least get us back to where we were two years ago. So I'm hoping somebody has the time and is crazy enough to actually take me up on this challenge, because the community is reliant upon you to represent us in things like this. Otherwise, it's very hard to make it better. So rock on, have fun. I, of course, will talk to you soon.
Thank you, Connie. City Clerk? We're just checking to see if anyone else is online.
Yes, we do have a few more individuals online, but no one else is indicating a desire to speak.
Thank you, City Clerk. Also, thank you for those that made comments tonight. We heard about one of our items of business this evening, which is on rental assistance, some great programming coming in the second quarter from our Main Street Group downtown, and about the difficulty reading, interpreting major projects lists, active projects lists, so that residents can easily follow us through the website. So thank you all for doing that. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. And Council President Marsh, do you have any email comments to summarize on any of tonight's agenda items?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did not receive any email on the items on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. So we will go into committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. March 21st, the Cascade Water Alliance Finance Committee will be meeting. March 22nd, the Cascade Water Alliance Board will be meeting. And March 29th, Sound Cities Association, I will be having their monthly or quarterly social elected meeting in Renton. If anyone would like to attend, I will be going. And then on your agenda for the Consent Agenda, AB 8581, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, I think, was mentioned in the public comments. That will be coming back to you for review, reflecting our February 28th work as we reviewed all of the LTAC applications. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one report and one upcoming meeting. On Thursday, March 16th, the Salmon Recovery Council of Wyra Eight met. Wyra Eight is the name of our watershed. And we had only informational items, so no decisions were made. We did have one item that I wanted to flag for my colleagues on the council, which is that we, one of the items that we are supporting at the state level in the state legislature is a $365,000 budget proviso for continuing a pilot effort on Lake Simamish to address impacts from artificial light pollution on salmon survival, and to continue to expand that work and to build on the work that was done last year. And this also ties into our Title 18, or Land Use Code work, because we have an ordinance there that will improve the lighting standards for docks to improve salmon survival. And many cities are looking forward to using that standard as well and incorporating it into their own code. And this budget proviso at the state level would help us expand the program, so outside of Lake Simamish as well, other lakes, other people would be able to use our code as well, and also take additional items, take additional actions to reduce light pollution. So that is exciting, and that is work that is happening in close partnership with Representative Ramos, who has been a big supporter of salmon recovery in our area. Then I have one upcoming meeting. The Planning, Development, and Environment Subcommittee of this council will meet on March 28th. We have two items. One is ID 1340, Public Projects Code of Conduct, and the other is ID 1394, which is the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update Scope. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The City Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee met on March 14th at 6:30 p.m. We had two items on the agenda. The first was ID 1387, which is an update on Northwest Simamish Road project. We looked at different alternatives for the cross-section of road for building out the non-motorized transportation from South Lake Simamish to the state park. We also got an update on the Wash dot Culvert project, which is going to unfortunately have an impact on the timeline for the Northwest Simamish project. This is coming back to the council, the full council, on April 17th for more discussion. We had a very large crowd. We had about 25 people show up for this one. Had a good discussion. I think by and large, people weren't really thrilled with the news, but understood the constraints that we're dealing with. We also took on ID 1291, Intelligent Transportation System Capital Project, and we received an update on the ITS project. We were given kind of three pieces of Ask for Guidance, the three directions. One was there's a need to further invest in infrastructure so that we can fully benefit from intelligent systems, and the council was supportive of that. And we also were supportive of alignment with the goals of the plan to include in the next CIP. And with that, we're expecting to see Public Works comes back with the CIP with funding to take the first steps in terms of building out infrastructure for intelligent transportation system. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Council Services, Safety, and Parks Committee is going to meet tomorrow night, 6:30, here in council chambers. ID 1245, Community Broadband Assessment. We're going to speak with Jean Paul and Dave Knauer and Andy Fox. Dave and Andy are consultants with the Timmins Group. We are going to discuss a recommendation from the administration that has elements of requesting, potentially requesting Issaquah Internet Service Providers to replace existing internet plans, as recommended in the report, and to work with Issaquah ISPs to build or improve broadband infrastructure and identify underserved neighborhoods, and then potentially developing an education program to educate residents on methods to reduce internet speed losses as well as accessibility to available internet discount programs available to low-income residents. So this is very exciting and a topic that has been much on my mind in recent years. That's the only topic at Services and Safety tomorrow night. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee did meet online on March 8th at 7:00 p.m., and as anticipated, no action or potential actions were taken. Later this evening, I'll be talking about a previous bill that was in front of Services, Safety, and Parks, ID 1388, Emergency Rental Assistance. But I will save that for when that item comes up on regular business. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President?
Looks like I'm the outlier tonight. No report this evening.
Oh, and actually, I'm going to jump to Councilmember De Michele, who I missed. Councilmember De Michele?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. On March 10th, I attended the Eastside Transportation Partnership Meeting. We received reports on the Ultra High Speed Rail Study, which is mapping out the feasibility of high-speed rail connecting Portland, Seattle, and Vancouver, B.C. And I shared the slides from that presentation with the council. We also received a report on the status of Safe Streets and Road Grants. On March 15th, I attended the Regional Transit Committee. We received an overview of Metro's collaboration on local comprehensive plan revisions, as well as an update on Rapid Ride Routes K and R. And if it helps, the K Line will be going through Kirkland and North King County, and the R Line goes south through Rainier Valley, replacing a route with the highest ridership in the system. So those were both very interesting reports. On March 16th, the Eastside Human Services Forum held its first meeting of the year, and the group reviewed plans for several public forums. And we're starting a strategic planning discussion, and we also did a round robin sharing. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Council President.
Thank you. Very short report. The Affordable Housing Committee met last week. We elected leadership. County Councilmember Belducci is continuing to lead the group and discussed our work plan and how we'll follow the legislative priorities that we had set after the session, since it seems there may be many potential bills coming out of the legislature that have some sort of impact on affordable housing. So we want to keep track of those as they go. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President. The next item is the Mayor's Report. There will not be an executive session this evening, and I invite everyone to join me on March 30th for the State of the City Address. So as mayor, I will have the honor to recognize accomplishments and review the city's current standing and preview the year ahead. Heather Tao Yek, our new Superintendent of Issaquah School District, will also be present to share highlights from the past year and her outlook on the future of Issaquah schools. Julie Hartwig, the CEO of the Issaquah Chamber of Commerce, will be recognizing incoming and outgoing chamber board members as well. To learn more, visit the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce website at issaquachamber.com. Stop by the Atlas Apartments Lobby on March 30th from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. to chat with city council members and staff on all things Central Issaquah. Topics will include parks and the Green Necklace, development and the Central Issaquah Plan, police, safety, city council, and upcoming events. We are currently seeking nominations for the Hall of Fame. They are now open, and it is a top honor for making a lasting contribution to our community. Each year, the mayor and council president select a person to induct into the Issaquah Hall of Fame for their exemplary record of inspiration, leadership, and service. The award will be presented virtually at the Chamber of Commerce Annual Issaquah Community Awards Event on May 24th. Nominations can be submitted at issaquahwa.gov/nominate, and the deadline for nominations is 5:00 p.m. on April 28th. But don't wait. Start thinking about it now. There's going to be a community transit survey. We'd like to hear your thoughts on the future of transit in Issaquah. Please provide your feedback by going to issaquahwa.gov/TransitStudySurvey. Tell us how often you currently use transit and your priorities on service frequency, transit connections, bus stop amenities, and more. Your input will help shape our transit study. Questions related to the transit study or survey can be emailed to Thomas Valdries, our Senior Transportation Planner, at thomasv@issaquahwa.gov. And there are a couple of upcoming events. On March 22nd, which is the beginning of Ramadan, it's an Islamic holiday that is recognized in our religious and cultural calendar. There is a Farm Fresh Market in downtown Issaquah, and I don't have to go into details because our executive director gave them, but it starts this March and it goes through April. It's a really fun thing to do on a Saturday. And that's all for the Mayor's Report. The next item of business on the agenda this evening is the Consent Calendar, and it was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the Consent Calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the Consent Calendar and consider it under regular business? If, can I get a motion?
Yes, I move to approve the Consent Calendar as written.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Hearing none. The motion before council is to approve the Consent Calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes 7-0 unanimously. Now, we're going to move into the regular business portion of our meeting, and we'll start with AB 8583, Emergency Rental Assistance. The request before council this evening is to authorize the funding. AB 8549 and AB 8586 will be presented jointly, and I see that our Human Services Manager, Monica Nagrilla, is already up at the podium. So let's start.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. This is Monica Nagrilla in Human Services. Nice to see you all tonight. As Mayor noticed, we are seeking city council's authorization tonight to approve a one-time funding allocation of $200,000 for emergency rental assistance. And we propose to utilize the 0.1% Affordable Housing Sales Tax revenue funds for this purpose. This is also known as HB 1590. So before I go into detail on how we propose to allocate those funds, I would like to give you a brief background on why are we here tonight and how did we come up with the proposal. In collaboration with our nonprofit partners, and one of whom you heard from tonight, we really identified a few trends in the post-pandemic era in our community. On one end, we noticed that needs continue to arise, and we continue to see those needs. In particular, one of our affordable housing providers in Issaquah Highlands, the YWCA, continues to see 42% of their units with rent, with overdue rent. We also noticed a few other trends. Reduced donations for our nonprofit partners. This is not unique just to our emergency financial assistance providers or to Issaquah. It's actually a nationwide trend. Due to the inflation last year, a lot of donors have stopped providing donations or donations decreased in amount. I mentioned inflation. It's no news to anyone. Last year was really, really difficult. In June of last year, we hit an all-time 39-year high in inflation of 9%. We ended the year with a 7% inflation. This really had an impact on affordability, rent, rent increases. And last but not least, the other trend is definitely at the end of the moratorium, rightfully so, landlords had to readjust the market, and so we hear about rent increases anywhere between 3% and 20%. So with that background, and that's the reason for us being here tonight, we mentioned that we would like to seek your approval to allocate $200,000. We propose, as you see on the screen, to allocate those to three of our local nonprofit agencies. The first two would go to Issaquah Community Services and St. Vincent de Paul, the St. Joseph Issaquah Conference, as our local 100% volunteer-based nonprofit providers. So 60% to ICS, not 60. $60,000 to ICS, $40,000 to St. Joseph Issaquah Conference. And we propose a $100,000 direct allocation to the YWCA in the Issaquah Highlands. This relates to create more efficiencies rather than asking the volunteer-based organizations to process one-by-one additional applications. We would just work directly with the employer and make sure that the overdue rent is being, that the funds that we provide will go towards the over rent, overdue rent, I'm sorry, for those units in the Highlands. Before I move on from this screen, I would like to also highlight that if council decides to approve utilizing the House Bill $1590, the Affordable Housing Sales Tax dollars, there's a requirement, a stipulation, that funds need to be used for residents at or below 60% AMI, area median income. We checked in with the organizations. They have no problem meeting that requirement. In fact, 90% of everyone that they serve is at or below 50% of AMI. So there are no concerns on that. And last but not least, also, you see on this screen in orange, the Human Services Grant allocations that the organizations currently receive from the city. So just you see where they're at, and then in green, what we are proposing to add to their current allocations. Moving on next, I'm gonna just start briefly the conversation on the 0.1% Affordable Housing Sales Tax revenue. We'll go a little bit in detail in just a few minutes. But just as a brief reminder, city council adopted at the end of 2020 the ordinance through which 0.1% of the sales tax would go towards the Affordable Housing Program. Again, based on state legislation, up to 40% of the revenues in that fund could be used for operations and services, for behavioral health services, and housing-related services. So this is kind of like the pot of money that we would use for this purpose. A brief overview, from 2021 and 2022 taxes, we currently have a little bit over $4.4 million in that fund. And for 2023, we are forecasted to add another $2.4 million. So it's a pretty healthy fund, and we'll talk a little bit about that just in a few more minutes. Before though, again, I would love to give you a little bit of background on the feedback that we received from the Human Services Commission and also from the council committee on this topic. So back in mid-February, we went to the Human Services Commission. We saw their input, and we received great support from the Human Services Commission to increase funds, and their suggestion was for staff to focus on disproportionately impacted communities, prioritizing BIPOC population, BIPOC as in brown, indigenous, and people of color. Next week, we went to the Services, Safety, and Parks Council Committee. Next week, we went to the Services, Safety, and Parks Council Committee meeting. And there, too, the committee was supportive of bringing this item forward to the regular City Council meeting for further discussion and deliberation. And we received a few other recommendations and questions for which we are gonna provide answers in the next few minutes. I'm gonna highlight two of those here. One was to consider increasing the funds to $250,000, and the other one was to provide additional information on the Affordable Housing Sales Tax utilization. So I'm gonna go now in a little bit more depth on this. You have actually more information in your staff report in the presentation. I just highlighted a few numbers. What you see on the screen is actually, thank you, Suzie Mansell, our finance manager, for providing all this great information. The committee asked for a breakdown between the operations and capital funds. So what you see on the screen, a really nice breakdown between those funds for the actuals and also for the forecasted numbers. I want to highlight those here and ask your permission. As the administration, we would like to return to City Council to a committee of the whole meeting in April and really dive deeper into discussing the long-term planning for these funds. So tonight, you just receive a brief overview. We are happy to answer questions. We also have our chief financial officer here if needed. However, we would really love to focus this conversation in more depth at a future council committee of the whole meeting. So currently tonight, we are proposing just a small expense to meet the immediate needs. And I would also like to highlight that, based on council discussion from during the last year's budget process, we also have allocated for this year's budget and for next year, funds to include the Motel 6 pilot project and also set aside money for the staffing for the Affordable Housing Planner position. Those are described in detail in your staff report. I don't have them pulled up on the screen here. What I do have, though, on the screen is really a fund balance that includes the total revenues broken down by operations and capital funds, and also should we consider the $200,000 tonight and the two other expenses that I just mentioned for Motel 6 and for the staffing. We still have a pretty healthy balance remaining of a total of over $7.3 million. So with that, just a few more additional responses to the feedback and questions that we received from the council committee meeting in February. And one of them, you have seen perhaps in your report, a great response from the city's attorney on the question regarding, there was a question at the committee meeting whether we could use potentially, as a city, all the funds towards capital projects. Because you have seen the legislation says that 60% can be used for capital and up to 40% could be used for operations. The question was, could be, if we want it, could we use all the money for capital? The short answer is yes. Our city attorney is online if we need further discussion. Again, I would recommend that we leave more detailed conversation on this topic in particular for the council committee meeting in April. But the short answer is yes. There are some caveats and exceptions, but I'm gonna stop there. Another question was, how many households that will receive rental assistance through this program will be families with school-aged children? We can safely say that anywhere between 60 and 90% of those benefiting from the funds will be families with children. We base the numbers based on actual 2022 numbers received from Isqwa Community Services and St. Vincent de Paul and from actual 2023 numbers, current units behind in rent at the YWCA. Then, one of the other proposals and recommendations was to consider increasing the funding allocation to $250,000 and provide a list of pros and cons. The administration would like to remain and propose the $200,000 that were originally proposed for this fund and consider, continue the discussion once City Council had a chance to really plan for the long-term use of these funds. In conversations with our partners, the $200 will nicely supplement their current needs and will leverage what they exist and they have currently. And so, as the administration, we chose to remain at the more conservative level to allow City Council to have the long-term conversation. And last but not least, we received a suggestion to consider hiring a consultant in the future to really evaluate the impact of the Human Services funds in the community. And so staff will take that into consideration for a future strategic plan development, and we will consider hiring a consultant. So with that, next, the options in front of you, council members, tonight, are on one end to approve the administration's recommendation to allocate the $200,000 for rental assistance utilizing the House Bill 1519 funds. The second option is you may direct the administration to consider funding at a different level or even consider a different revenue source. And then last, you may decide to take no action at this time. So, to summarize, the administration's recommendation really is to put in front of you the approval of a one-time funding allocation of $200,000 utilizing the sales tax revenue funds and having the three programs we mentioned, Isqwa Community Services, St. Vincent de Paul, and YWCA, being the three organizations that will distribute these funds. Should City Council approve our recommendation, staff will proceed to enter into contract agreements, and we expect that all funds will be distributed in 2023. And so this concludes my presentation. You have the recommendation on the screen again, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Monica. Are there any questions by council members before I hand it over to committee chair Marts, who might want to provide some additional information? Not far by there, straight to you, council member.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So at that February meeting, we asked, basically, I'm trying to remember if it was, there's a difference in my notes. I don't remember if it was one or was it all three of us, or was it just one?
It was just you.
Okay. No. What's that? It was all three of us, okay. To look into this potential amount of $250,000, we had identified the idea of moving the YWCA amount from $100,000 to $125,000, the ICS amount from $40,000 to, sorry, the ICS amount from $60,000 to $75,000, and the St. Vincent de Paul amount from 40 to 50. But I had also asked for a bunch of additional information on basically the health of the 40% amount and the 60% amount, and some idea of what our plans were for those amounts. So, then we asked about the potential consultant, and so some of that information is here this evening, and some of it sounds like the administration would like to have at a future time. But that was the amount that the three of us discussed.
Thank you for that. That's a good summary. I just wanted to point out that when the council has their additional conversation in April, there's always the potential for us to bring back you information on what this administration proposal has accomplished. And we would be able to see if the need was greater than what was done. So there is opportunity. This is considered to be urgent and not necessarily regular business, but we definitely need some more information, and we can bring stuff back in April as well, if that's helpful. Because you did ask for a lot of information.
Yeah, I sure did.
If we have questions, great. Otherwise, let's go for motion. Questions?
Yeah. A quick question. I just wanted to hear the summary of the committee meeting first. Do we know if the county is still providing? Just out of curiosity, are they still providing rental assistance dollars? And are we?
Most of the, thank you for that question. Most of the support services have been expanded at this time. And yes, from local, regional, yeah. They are still those who have signed up. Last year, there might still be some that they are distributing, but nothing new is being, there are no new applications that are being processed right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
More questions? A motion?
Sure. I move to authorize a one-time funding allocation of $200,000 for emergency rental assistance utilizing 0.1% Affordable Housing Sales Tax funds to be distributed by local emergency, financial assistance, and housing support programs as follows. Isqwa Community Services, $60,000. St. Vincent de Paul, St. Joseph Conference, $40,000. And YWCA, Isqwa Family Village, $100,000. And direct the chief financial officer to include the $200,000 funding allocation in a subsequent 2023-2024 budget amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and I missed that council member De Michelle had her hand up. So before going to the motion maker, maybe we can see if she has a question.
No question. I was going to second if council member De Michelle.
That is still really hard to do in a hybrid meeting, to catch that flow. Okay, to the motion maker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I certainly understand the argument that this is an emergency action, and given the sort of inability to get a holistic view of what our long-term plans are for that 40 and not 60, I do understand the argument to do a smaller amount right now. I think that, you know, we have built up an extraordinary reservoir of money. And, but there's a number of things down the road that we want to think about. You know, I mentioned, you know, fentanyl and some of the impacts in our community of opiates. And of course, there's a conversation about the Opportunity Center associated with transit or in development. And so I'm eager to have all those conversations, and I understand and support the administration's position that we should start with this emergency amount, get it, get it out the door, get it out to people and help them, and perhaps revisit this as part of the larger conversation about the very large nest egg that has developed. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. First, I'd like to compliment the administration and Monica Negriola for coming tonight and adding color to this agenda bill. I think it's great that we are giving money to organizations that have been longtime community pillars, and those organizations are giving money directly to people that they have screened and have a relationship with, and those that need funding right away. So if we can continue to keep that at the forefront as we look at all this funding and the future, whether it's with a consultant or one of our human services people, I think keeping a focus on getting the money to the people that really need it and that we have a relationship and that are part of our community here is very important from my point of view. I think that the breakdown is great. I would ask that we also kind of give some thought to the homeless youth that we have in our community, though, at the same time. The school administration, school district, estimates that there are 95 homeless students in the district. I would venture to say that number is probably a lot higher than that. People that are couch surfing or are in unsafe situations in housing as well. And the people who are not housed in our school district have to go to either Kirkland, or to Auburn, or to Seattle. And we're a growing community. We're getting bigger. We have a wonderful population that cares about what goes on here. At the same time, we need to step up and be cognizant of our responsibilities as a community to all the members that live here. So just an over-the-horizon goal or aspiration that I have, and I would just pass on to the administration, the Human Services Department, as we go forward, looking at the holistic picture of how we're going to use this funding in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember De Michelle, and then council president.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Well, first of all, I want to thank Monica and the team for putting together a lot of information in a short period of time. And I still think that we have some additional questions, but I do appreciate the information that was assembled for tonight. I had advocated for the larger amount, for the $250,000, based on my reading about the number of young people who are currently truant from schools, or the dropout rate in this country has also been soaring. And so my specific concern was making sure that we targeted families with children and made sure that those children were able to complete the school year, because we're only four months away from the end of the school year, and it would be really tragic to have families evicted and their children actually lose a year of schooling because they couldn't finish the school year. But I feel like the statistics that came back to us are very helpful, and it appears that a lot of families will get help through this process. And I thoroughly agree with the administration that we need to have a plan for the 590 funds. That is turning into a large amount of money, and I think we need to stop and pause and figure out exactly what we want to do with it. And there are many, many excellent uses that we could put that money to. So I'm sure it will be a really interesting conversation. So in short, I will support the motion that's on the table tonight. And I would hope that when we have the topic come back to us with a little bit more meat around the uses of that fund, that we can also do kind of a check-in, make sure that we're meeting the needs in our community, and if we do need to add to the $200,000, that we could do it at that time. But for now, I am ready to support the motion tonight. Thank you.
Council president.
Thank you. I will take what I have heard from the other council members just a step further. I am very eager to have this planning conversation about how we use this large amount of money, what the highest and best use of that is, what the needs are for our community. And I have to say, I'm a little bit frustrated that this is coming back to us, knowing that, one, that conversation is supposed to happen next month, and, two, that this isn't the first time that we've said, okay, we understand there's an urgent need, but we really want to make sure that we're having a conversation about planning so that we are utilizing those funds to the best of our abilities. So I will express a little bit of frustration, absolutely appreciate that the information is getting to us about the need, appreciate that we have great organizations in our community that are able to have those relationships. But I really want to have those conversations about our homeless youth, about whether building and utilizing one of maybe our city-owned properties to build something versus a temporary, short fix of rental assistance is the best use. And so I come at this with a little bit of frustration. That being said, $200,000 for a very urgent need, I will support it, and I'm very much looking forward to that future conversation.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. Well, I was interested in hearing the perspective of the committee. I do think rent assistance will be a part of the future need as well. We clearly are not addressing that whole need. And in fact, as was presented today, $100,000 was the difference between last year's budget for ICS and this, just based on people donating less. So I think we are nowhere near addressing the need. I realize this addresses some of it, but I would, I will look forward to having more conversations about that rental assistance, because it seems that the committee that did the deep dive on this would like to respect their work. It seems every committee member is comfortable with this recommendation at this time. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, if there's no further discussion, the motion before council is to authorize a one-time funding allocation of $200,000 for emergency rental assistance utilizing 0.1% Affordable Housing Sales Tax funds to be distributed by local emergency, financial assistance, and housing support programs as follows. Isqwa Community Services, $60,000. St. Vincent de Paul, St. Joseph Conference, $40,000. And YWCA, Isqwa Family Village, $100,000. And to direct the chief financial officer to include the $200,000 funding allocation in a subsequent 2023-2024 budget amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? That is great. That passes unanimously, 7-0. And the next item of business tonight, thank you, Monica, is AB 8549, 2022 Budget Reauthorizations and AB 8586. The first thank you, Monica, is AB 8549, 2022 Budget Reauthorizations and AB 8586, the first 2023 Budget Amendment. And AB 8549 and 8586 will be presented jointly, and I'd like to invite our CFO, Robert Hamud, to present this item. Hi, Robert.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So we just have a brief slide presentation to summarize the information that's in the packet in front of you this evening. Next slide, sorry. So tonight, again, we're requesting the city council to reauthorize certain funds previously budgeted in 2023 for expenditure in the 2023 and '24 budget cycle. And the request is to adopt the proposed ordinance amending the 2023-'24 adopted budget. Next slide. So the 2022 reauthorizations, it's an annual housekeeping manner. The budget reauthorization real allocates unspent funding authority for an unfinished project into the next fiscal year to allow completion of the project. New this year is the biennial budget, so what that means is there will not be a 2023 reauthorization, because we're going into the first biennial budget cycle for the city. And so there's four rationale buckets that are hypothetical here for the reauthorizations. One is the staff capacity. A lot of the projects, as you know, we were starting the construction in the season. Staff capacity was a concern, so it did delay some of the projects, but a lot of that has been alleviated, so we do have a spending plan for those reauthorization items and projects as well as for the 2023-'24. Number two is the supply chain delays. They are improving, but they're still continuing, so that did delay some of our projects. Three are external delays. So this is anything from the timing of a contract, any external pressures, grant funding, other items, federal agencies, state agency authorizations. Those delays also factor into some of the reauthorization requests. And then four, just simply multi-year projects, where we do have several CIP projects, for example, that transcend fiscal years. And so the reauthorization summary, you can see that the total on the expenditure side is approximately $26.4 million. Total revenues, $8.1 million. Again, this is all funds in the city. But again, some of these projects, again, were carried over year over year as part of a routine, and some of these were active projects, so they were already anticipated to have a reauthorization for the multi-year projects. And next slide, any questions on this slide so far? So the first 2023-'24 budget amendment that you're also considering tonight will have the previously approved requests by council, five of them, one budget correction, and seven budget adjustments. And so the budget amendment summary, on the revenue side, $8.998 million across all funds, $7.64 in expenditures, so about a $2 million or $2.1 million increase in the budget amendment summary. And again, this is for a two-year period, not a one-year period. And any questions?
Seeing any, Robert? Go back to mine. You were at the end of your presentation?
Yes, that's all.
Thanks. Council questions, and if no questions, is somebody prepared to make a motion? Council President?
Questions. I'm trying to find my information, because I wasn't expecting it to go that quick at this point. So with the budget amendments, let's see, can you talk me through the budget amendments on the ARPA project, how each of the expenditures are coming through, and what they're pulling from?
Yes, I can. I believe it's, I'm just making sure I got the right page here. It should be, is this a budget adjustment number 10? Page 273 of your packet?
Yes, thank you.
So just to summarize here, I'll just briefly read the description. AB 8488 approved the allocation of $4 million of ARPA dollars to two capital park improvement projects, Confluence Park and Veterans Memorial Field Pedestrian Park. In addition to these funds, the administration proposes shifting to other parks' capital projects to appropriate adequate funding to ensure the completion within the timeframe for the ARPA funds. So again, what this adjustment is doing, the intention of it, is to make sure that we are shifting the ARPA dollars, make sure that we're spending that money by the 2024 deadline for the American Rescue Plan Act funding. And so that's what the allocations are on the site as well. And some of the other detail on that, the Tibbetts Valley Park had $427,000 budgeted, $350,000 was for the park impact fees, $77,000 was from REIT, so I think that was answering your question. The amendment reappropriates the $427,000 of unspent funds, and again, shifts $376,000 to PK 41, $50,000 to PK 10. And we also had the Creek Corridor had the $200,000 of REIT funds budgeted. So again, that wasn't ARPA, it was REIT funds. And that amendment reappropriates that $200,000 of unspent funds from the Creek Corridor and shifts them to the Capital Project 41.
Quite the puzzle.
And then I have kind of a follow-up on that, and I see Jeff has come up on the screen, so I'll key in my question for you on that. The Creek Corridor, from my understanding, Creek Corridor is an acquisition project, but this talks about it as a design project. Can you talk me through what that $200,000 is, and whether that would impact the money that would go into an acquisition fund?
Absolutely. Thanks for the question. I'll answer that one directly, and then maybe I can also give some context to Robert's overview. But to your question first, this is not an acquisition project. PK 45, the Creek Corridor, is a continuation of, it is a planning and eventually a construction project. It's a continuation of some of the community engagement work we did before the pandemic. The acquisition budget, which is PK, or fund, which is PK 12, valley and creekside acquisitions remains whole. So what you have before you tonight is a proposal that doesn't touch or impact the ability that we have to act on strategic acquisitions that might support the Creek Corridor. These are planning dollars that, just to give some additional context to Robert's feedback to you all, you might recall the conversations we had last summer and fall with these ARPA projects, where even as we were identifying potential projects, US Council stated your goal to find a way to make sure the ARPA funds paid for construction and not design. And so you may recall, we talked about strategically at that time, we might need to bundle design dollars we already have in the capital budget to fund the design of this ARPA work, or the projects that we decide upon, so that the federal ARPA funds could go towards construction. What you have before you tonight is a budget adjustment that follows through on that commitment. It doesn't mean Tibbetts Valley Park nor the Creek Corridor are no longer priorities. Those remain super high priorities, but this was just a way of taking existing design dollars, have these fund the design contract you approved a couple months ago for the pedestrian park senior center plaza and Eck House work, so that those ARPA funds, again, could go towards construction and not the soft costs of design.
Additional questions? And Barb does not have her hand up either. Okay, is anyone prepared to, oh, Deputy Council President?
Thank you. And just quickly to clarify, I mean, it's not to say that now we're going to spend $200,000 less on Creek Corridor. That will be backfilled eventually with other dollars. Is that correct?
Yeah, that would be the goal, right? You will have the 2024 through 2029 six-year CIP before you here in a couple months. We also are going to be doing pretty extensive community engagement around the park strategic plan update this summer. That's going to be before you in 2024. I know both the Green Necklace as a council priority and a community priority, as well as the Creek Corridor. This seven-mile north-south spine all the way through town will remain community priorities and probably be spoken to in both that CIP and that park strategic plan.
Thank you.
Just to check for more questions, I see Councilmember Hunt. Do you need to speak? Do you want to provide some information out? Let's go to Councilmember Hunt.
Okay, thank you. So the Creek Corridor project in the 2022-2027 CIP, it has the $200,000 spent in 2022, which is behind us now. Then it has $100,000 in 2024 for design, but it also gets into construction in 2024. And I am wondering, and this is the multi-phase project that would create the series of parks, trails, and green spaces that would stretch from Lake Siamish to the southern edge of the city at Squawk Valley Park. So I'm wondering, since we already are past 2022, and we're talking about using that funding for something else, how does this impact that timeline? And also, shouldn't this conversation probably be in the CIP? It seems like a CIP conversation, but since we're here, I'm wondering how it affects the timeline. Thanks.
And now go to City Administrator Bob Kowits, but first, just want to remind the council that the ARPA projects were being discussed at the same time as the budget last year, and we only have so many bodies. So sometimes we have to shift things around just to support the work that we can do. City Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'll let Jeff, you know, pick up on this point, but I wanted to just remind the council of the discussion we did have during the budget deliberations, where the administration, I think, made it very clear that we were uncomfortable with the resources that we had, not only to work on the Green Necklace and the Creek Corridor, but a lot of other projects. And so we asked the council to add a capital projects manager for Parks and Recreation, which you were kind enough to do. Our challenge has been hiring the position, and so we went through a recruitment process that failed just in the last month. We are trying to sort through next steps for that. So I think as much as having dollars allocated, we need people resources, too, even to go through the process of contracting for additional work. Right now, it is Jeff and one additional staff person to do all of our park project work. And so by adding this additional staff person, I think that gives us a little bit more leverage. We heard the council out in clear, we agree with you. But I think, as the mayor said, there's only so much money, and there's only so much time. And the council's discussion regarding the ARPA project was that that was a priority to get out the door, given the federal requirements on that funding. So Jeff, if you want to elaborate anymore on resources and focus, go right ahead.
No, thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowits. Really appreciate that overview. Very, very real. I think to your question, too, Councilmember Hunt, is a really good one. You know, when that CIP, the 2022 CIP, was being created in 2021, we were still in a pandemic. We were hoping to be able to launch into the really, really important visioning work and community engagement work for the Creek Corridor. That didn't happen. We made a conscious decision not to really try and engage in that kind of public engagement work during the pandemic. And then to the city administrator's point, as we started crafting the budget and priorities with you last year, it was pretty clear that completing capital projects that were already in design was the priority for '23 and '24 budget, and we wanted to stay true to that. So even along with completing this ARPA investment, really as a first phase of our old-town parks, we also have on our work plan completion of Hillside Park, have completion of our first dog park, have completion of the Eck House project, have the park strategic plan update. I could keep going down the list, but just to say that we have a pretty full dance card. So, you know, as the CIP conversation here in a couple months, I think we'll continue to show that that Creek Corridor visioning, as well as Tibbetts Valley Park visioning, which also has design funding proposed to go to the ARPA project, both of those remain really, really high priorities. And we certainly hope, with staffing resources that, thank you, you've been able to provide us with, we're able to continue to move forward on all of these important efforts, both planning efforts, acquisition efforts, and development efforts.
Additional questions? Not seeing additional questions. Barb has not cut her hand up. Would someone care to make a motion? Council President?
I move to adopt ordinance number 3009, reauthorizing remaining 2022 funds for certain projects and amending the 2023-2024 budget as set forth in ordinance number 2994 concerning revenues, expenditures, and fund balance for various funds.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. Well, there is a lot of material here, and I think it is well explained. I think each budget item has information about it, so I appreciated that. Of all of that information, of the millions of dollars here, the one thing that doesn't make sense to me is this Creek Corridor project having the design funds reallocated to the ARPA project. And so I have two reasons I think it doesn't make sense for me. One is I don't, my intent, when we had those conversations about ARPA, which is true, they were fast-paced conversations, and we may not have been able to cover everything, and so now we're continuing to make sure that we're crossing all the Ts and dotting all the Is, and I understand that. I think from my intent to clarify that, which I think is important at this point, I wanted to make sure that we had projects that we were able to do the construction on with the ARPA funds and have a place for people to go to at the end, so they knew this project was done, and they could enjoy it. And it was a public benefit that was a tangible benefit at the end, which meant that construction had to be part of that funding and completed with that. And that is, I think, what my intent was in comments that I made, that I don't think we would be as well-served if we had a really great design at the end, using the ARPA funds, a really great design for a project, and then we needed to go have additional funding to support it. I wanted instead to make sure that we had funds that covered the improvements, and they got done. So that wasn't to say, at least for me, and I would be very interested to hear my colleagues, but that wasn't to say for me that I thought $0 would go to design, or to planning, or to other, I'm sure, the many other aspects that need to go into these very complicated infrastructure projects. So this is $200,000. It is within the scope of this entire budget amendment, and even within the scope of the ARPA project. It is a relatively small percentage. But for the Creek Corridor project, it's the design and planning for that project. And like I said, this is the project that connects Lake Siamish all the way down to the south edge of the city. So I think it's very important. I think if we want to talk about reprioritizing or moving timelines, and I understand about the dance card, I think the dance card is a very important conversation, but it really feels like a CIP conversation to me. So I think, I wanted to clarify that, because I don't actually, my intent wasn't actually aligned with the way the answer was characterized, as far as not using any of the funding for design, or using it all for construction, and then for ARPA. And then the other thing is, with the timeline, I don't think that we, I don't feel comfortable assuming that the funding is decoupled from the timeline and the planning. I think we should have a conversation about funding as well as about resource allocation, and I think that should be a CIP conversation. But for now, I'm not comfortable moving this money out of a really important project that council has identified is really important, and I would like to make sure that we have the funding there going into the next conversations about how to make sure that we can make progress on it. So with all that said, and like I said, everything else, I appreciate the information, and I agree to, but I would like to make an amendment. I move to amend the ordinance Exhibit C, Budget Adjustment Descriptions, Budget Adjustment 10, to not shift unspent 10, to not shift unspent $200,000 of planning design funding within the Creek Corridor project, PKO 45, to PKO 41, and to instead reauthorize those funds for the Creek Corridor project for 2023.
Can you get a clarification? That would not provide enough money for the ARPA project. So can your recommendation include where the $200,000 can come from?
I have a motion here to do one thing. I do think, I imagine that there will be additional funding needed for the ARPA project, and so I would request a different funding be identified by the administration. I went through, I had a conversation with Director Watling earlier today. It's difficult from council's side to look through where there are funds that are unspent and try to crosswalk it against the CIP, because the CIP says new requests. So I attempted that, but I think probably much better to have, if council is interested, which...
Just a second clarifying question. If we don't have the staffing to do the Creek Corridor planning this year, you still want the funds to remain in, allocated?
I, I think that that, to me, is a CIP conversation about planning and resourcing. That's my opinion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Conversation? Council President?
Thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate all of the detailed information in this. In the entire information, this was the one thing that kind of stood out to me that said, well, wait a second, that's making a decision about a project that we included in the CIP, and this isn't just a moving money from one year to the other. It feels like it's a decision about a project and somehow downgrading a project by removing the money for it. I appreciate the information that there are staffing challenges, there are resource challenges, but I don't think that a budget reauthorization and amendment is a time to have that type of conversation. I would be open to having that and understanding, well, where are our priorities according to what the resources we do have from both the funding and the staffing standpoint? But at this point, I would much rather the $200,000 come out of a capital fund or a general fund or whatever that is, rather than making a decision to basically defund the planning portion of the Creek Corridor project. So that would be my preference, and I will be supporting the amendment.
Are there comments? Councilmember Ray?
Actually, it's not a comment, it's a question. And the question is, there's a lot of moving parks here. What's the implication of this? I mean, it sounds very interesting, and I agree with the council president, and it seems like an odd place, but I don't understand, if we do this, what it means to you, what it means to getting work done, because it's all about getting work done, right?
So here's our best take on that. If this motion passes, then the ARPA project is $200,000 in arrears, and we are not, we do not have a substitute for that. If the motion passes, I guess we will have to go and look for $200,000 to take away from another project, and we will come back to you. The project is, and again, I think it's important, there's been discussion about budgeting. The council passed a budget for fiscal '23 that did not have this funding in it. And so from the administration's perspective, we've already had this discussion with you, and the money was not included in the budget. So now there's a request to put it back in the budget using the carryover. We do not believe we have the resources to work on this project during '23. We hope that at some point we'll be able to fulfill this position, and so perhaps that work could happen in '24. So again, if the motion passes, our first priority is we have a consultant working today, we need to pay those bills, we'll need to come back to you with those dollars. So that would be the first priority. But we really, as I think Jeff did a great job of explaining, there's a lot of things on our dance card. A dance card that the city council approved when you adopted the fiscal '23 budget. We want to do, we want to do everything, we truly do, but we also feel an obligation to be honest with you with resources.
I'll come back to you, Councilmember Hunt. I just want to make a little quicker, yeah, quicker round in the room. Any other questions?
Not question, but comment.
A comment, okay. Well, let's go to the question then. Councilmember Hunt, question, and then we'll do comments.
So this, I had my questions about this today. This is a budget amendment, so why would this be a required budget amendment if it was already approved?
It's the carryover from the fiscal year. So again, we had projects that carried over year over year. '22 ended, so we're asking to reauthorize these projects as far as their budget authority for the '23-'24 biennial budget year.
Will you take a second and explain the difference between a reauthorization versus an amendment?
Sure. The reauthorization is a list of items that you're carrying over year to year. The amendment's actually funding those items. So you have the list of items you're identifying, you're saying, these items, these projects are carrying over year over year. The amendment is any adjustment to the current appropriation to accommodate those items. So again, unspent funding from the last year. You could have a, an adjustment that says we're still working on this project, but it's going to be within the current fiscal year funding. The appropriation takes care of anything that's above and beyond what was already appropriated in '23-'24, meaning the unspent money, reprogramming that unspent money for the current fiscal year.
So let me say it back to you. In the '23-'24 budget, there was not a line item for $200,000 for this project. In '22, there was. It was unspent. What you're asking to do is reauthorize it towards a different project?
Yes, for the entire project budget, yes.
More questions? And if not, we'll go to comments. Look at Chris's face. Did that not make sense either? Go ahead, ask a question.
No, no, I think it makes sense. I just don't know what to do with it.
Any more questions? Otherwise, Councilmember Mertz wants to make a comment. Looks like you're up.
So the thing at the heart of this for me, I don't really know what to do with this this evening. It kind of feels to me like maybe I just missed it, that it wasn't, that the Creekside stuff wasn't in the 2023 budget. I mean, I think at some point we need to have a really strategic conversation about what's at the heart of our parks plan. I always thought it was the creek and Confluence Park. Those are the two pieces that are at the very, very heart of what we have going on parks-wise in our city. And if we've gotten distracted from that by ARPA dollars and conversation about what we could or couldn't do in certain other parks, I think I've been consistent in saying that I want to focus on the spine of the parks, which is Creekside and, or I mean, the Creek Corridor and Confluence Park. So I don't really know what to do today, because this is an odd topic, other than maybe correct a wrong, and that I should have seen this not in the 2023 budget, because I just, I want us to make progress. We have, we do things on the Creek Corridor. We may, we have made some progress, but we're still not, we've identified this a long time ago, both this and the centrality of Confluence Park, and neither have had the progress that I would love to see with distractions and other park areas. So I, like I said, I don't know what to do today, other than highlight, I think that at the heart of this whole conversation is really needing to have a check sometime after today on where we're focusing our park efforts, and are we putting it where our major strategic plans have said we should be focusing? Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Deputy Council President?
Well, and just real briefly, that sounds like a fantastic conversation during the CIP process to tee up for council, to kind of have that structured conversation about parks in general. And for that reason, I think I'm, I love the intent of the amendment and would love to get behind it, but I think I'm more convinced by just the reality of us not having the staff capacity to get it done. That's a problem in and of itself, that we should just have a discussion with during the CIP, so I won't be supporting the amendment tonight. This reminds me a lot of a conversation we recently had at the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee too, which is just, given all of these rationale buckets essentially that we have for reauthorizations, or just not being able to do work, like staff capacity or supply chain issues and stuff like that, that we need to kind of have a more grounded conversation as a council of what we can actually accomplish, given the resources that we have, whether they be staff, or people resources, or money resources. And that's a tough one, because I think we're a pretty lofty council in wanting to get things done to get, you know, better outcomes for the future here in Issaquah, but we only have so much that we can do in each area. I mean, even in the consent agenda earlier today was talking about some of the great progress that we've been making in equity, in the equity framework. There are so many different hats that we wear as a city, and some new ones, affordable housing. We haven't really had that conversation about what is our role with those dollars. So this is a tough conversation, I'll be not the first to admit that, but for that reason, I won't be supporting the amendment tonight, but do support having that conversation and potentially righting a wrong, if there is one, during the CIP discussion. Thanks.
Any additional comments or questions?
Madam Mayor.
I'm seeing none, so we'll go to Wally.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Jeff to come back on and talk about two points. One is the council's funded process for the Park Master Plan relook, and that process that is currently underway, and then anything else you want to talk about as far as what our recent investments have been in the Creek Corridor.
Sure, thanks for that. Really appreciate hearing council discussion on this, and, sorry, get emotional. No, just my voice. Really, the priority that is the Creek Corridor, I want to point out one thing, that, you know, as, as the park board, as we discussed with you and looked at where we make these potential ARPA investments, I just want to point out that both the conglomeration of parks in Old Town that make up Pedestrian Park and the Senior Center, and that is a pearl on the necklace of the Creek Corridor. Confluence Park and that investment is also a pearl on the necklace of the Creek Corridor. So I just, I want to give you credit and applaud you that even these ARPA projects are investments that are going to be long benefiting this Creek Corridor and the planning effort. And that comes really from the community engagement we did last summer, as we started to pore over maps with residents and said, what is this spine? What is this northwest or north-south spine that is the Creek Corridor? And there's an understanding that the Rainier Trail is part of that, and these parks in Old Town are very much part of it. I think as we continue the engagement now with this summer for the Park Strategic Plan update, as I said earlier, I think tightening the vision for the Green Necklace, beginning to really coalesce the vision for the Creek Corridor, begin to do some trail planning and prioritize where those key gaps are, that work's just going to, we're going to get that much more detailed into that work. So a little bit more context there, but really appreciate your, just support of the Creek Corridor as a high priority. It remains a high priority for administration too. Thanks.
Councilmember Ray?
Thanks. This is really hard. I mean, it's really hard for me to wrap my brain around it, so I've got a couple of points I want to make. One is, it's weird to do a budget adjustment and be moving dollars not from like to like year over year, so I get that. But it also leaves us in a jam, because if we don't do it, then we've got some unfunded work that we agreed we need to do. So those are the kind of my, kind of processing of all the information I've gotten tonight. And then I want to layer on top of that is, this is a CIP problem. I mean, we, this is something we should be addressing when we take on the CIP, and this is a CIP year. And the one thing that I'm going to advocate for tonight, and every time we talk about this, is I'm tired of hearing, we've got a full dance card and we can't, you know, we can't chew everything that's on our plate, mixed metaphor, I'm sorry. But then let's not put it on our plate. We've got to do a better job as a council and as a city government of saying, we only have the capacity to do X, so let's stop talking about Y. And so I think I want to go ahead with the budget amendment as present, the budget amendment as presented, not the amendment as presented, because I think that moves us forward. But I want to have this discussion, and I think this is what Councilmember Mertz talked about too, I want to have this discussion, and I'm just tired of, oh, we just don't have the capacity to do that. So fine, then what do we have the capacity to do, and that's what we'll do. But we can't keep saying, you know, we're at the buffet and we're putting too much on our plate. So let's be real with each other.
So Councilmember Ray, thank you for that, and I think you guys did a very good job of that in the fall. The part of the capital plan that ends up in the budget is not necessarily the first year of the CIP, and I think that's the really important part to talk about in this, what are we going to do with our CIP process, because this is the constant source of frustration. But we are staffed to do what was in the budget, and this project wasn't there. So we really do have to focus in on that conversation. I believe it's Council President.
Thank you. Can someone talk me through budget amendment number one? It says AB 8487, approve the allocation of 1.591 million in ARPA funds in the 2023-2024 budget for the following projects. There's a list of projects, and then toward the end of that, it also says the remaining $409,000 will be kept in reserve in the Capital Project Fund until after these projects have completed the bidding process. This will ensure that sufficient funding is available. Would it be a possibility to take $200,000 from that rather than unfund a project that we had previously allocated, since that remains in the Capital Project Fund?
Yeah, everybody wants to jump in on this one. In your current approved budget, you don't have this $200,000 funding. It's not in your budget. It is in your capital plan. That exact project did not end up in the approved budget by council. Next, I don't know who wants to chime in and answer if that's a Robert or a Wally question.
I was, go ahead. Sorry. Council President Walsh, to the mayor's point on that, with the ARPA funds, we've already identified, you know, funding as far as city funds and other funds to match the ARPA projects, and we've reported that to the federal government. So any changes at this point on ARPA would probably be pretty restricted. And shifting ARPA funds from one project to another, we could, not guarantee, but we could run afoul of the feds for that at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? Any additional comments? Okay, the amendment to the motion on the table is to amend the ordinance Exhibit C, Budget Adjustment Descriptions, Budget Adjustment Number 10, to not shift unspent $200,000 of planning design funding within the Creek Corridor project, PKO 45, to PKO 41, and to instead reauthorize those funds for the Creek Corridor project for 2023. All those in favor say aye? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
The amendment fails two to five, and going back to the main motion, there's been a lot of questions, so I'm assuming there may be a few more questions or comments before we vote? One more opportunity? Council President?
Yeah, I will just come back to this. I really appreciated some of the creative accounting that I saw in there. That really, truly did stay true to our goals. You know, I saw money from the temporary fire station that wasn't going to be spent being put toward the permanent fire station. And so I can see in everything, except for this one little area, that finance was really taking the meat of what we were trying to do and putting it forward. And I really appreciate all of the detailed information in that memo about why something was carried over, whether it was because we had supply chain issues or just the project was intended to go multiple years. That really helps me understand it, so I wanted to put out that appreciation on the information.
Thank you, Council President. Thumbs up from Deputy Council President. Any more comments before I read the main motion? I see Councilmember DeMichele's hand is not up. The motion is to adopt ordinance number 3009, reauthorizing remaining 2022 funds for certain projects, and amending the 2023-24 budget as set forth in ordinance number 2994 concerning revenues, expenditures, and fund balance for various funds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That carries unanimously, seven to no. The next item of business this evening is good of the order, so looking around to see a couple, one going up. Deputy Council President?
Thanks. I just had one thing I wanted to add. We had a really great informational update from Stephanie Johnson, our HR director, in our consent calendar about the equity framework, so I just wanted to give her a huge shout-out and everyone else on our internal equity team for all the work that they're doing. The memo really highlighted kind of the challenge and how time-consuming this work is, and I also is, and I also just wanted to say, too, from, you know, what I've been learning in my own MPA program, we talk a lot about this and how jurisdictions are applying an equity lens, and it is a challenge, and a lot more than many policymakers appreciate right away. And so much of it ends up really being a product of organizational culture, which takes a lot of time and a lot of nurturing. So, I just wanted to just take a step back and make sure that Stephanie and everyone else who's involved in equity in the city is thoroughly acknowledged and appreciated and honored, and this council is just tremendously proud of you, and keep up the great work. I mean, somewhere in the packet, it was just one line towards the end, it said that diversification of our workforce has increased by 6% in the last year. That's not something to bury at the end of a memo. That's amazing. Like, that is incredible work, City of Issaquah. Congratulations, and like I said, keep up the good work.
Great comments. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I would just like to pass on compliments to our council president for hosting our Fifth District Senator, Senator Mullet, our House Representatives, Ramos and Callan, on Sunday. It was a well-attended event. We had mayors from Maple Valley, North Bend, Snoqualmie, all participating in the forum, along with quite a robust audience of various community members from all over the district. So, council president did a great job hosting and moderating the conversation, and you made Issaquah proud by represent as well.
One last item, I'm not sure council president if you saw, but there was an email from the public that was on tonight's items. Not sure if you want to kind of add that into the record?
Yeah, I will have to look through, back through the emails. I admit, I am a little bit behind.
While you're looking, I'll do a couple of meetings. So, Thursday, March 30th is a special city council meeting. There are two of them, one in the morning and one at night. 7:30 a.m., State of the City address at the Hilton Garden Inn. 6:30 p.m., the council's community listening session at the Atlas Apartments. And on Monday, April 3rd, the city council meeting with anticipated agenda items, including public works, staffing, resources. And just one other good of the order item I'll share for now, is I will be heading to Washington, D.C. on Saturday as part of the National League of Cities. Thousands and thousands of council members and mayors from around the country attend this event, and so, it's an opportunity. I believe I have a one-on-one with our Congresswoman, and I'm in some group meetings with our senators, so it should be exciting, and I'll report out when I get back. Any luck with it, council president?
Well, I see the email that this community member has mentioned. I had not recognized it as related to the budget update, but I will say there are some questions in the email about the effectiveness and what the impacts are on TR 073, the Mountain Park Boulevard Southwest Safety Elements, which is $200,000, which I guess is going into a reauthorization, and that fed into the comments about having a tough time finding the current TIP and major projects list. So, that, I guess, was the email related.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Any other items for good of the order? Then, there being no further business, we are adjourned at 8:34.